...remodels to the building. Captain Roger Morgan and I are asking the City of Port Jervis to waive any of the building fees that would be incurred during this process. The work is scheduled to be done on September 28th and 29th, 2016. Is that a motion?
I'd make that a motion. I don't think it'll be a significant amount of money if they don't have it.
I'll second.
But the building inspector cannot just waive it, so we can do it.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. We did receive a letter from Al Fusco Engineering and Land Surveying. This is because we border this proposed Deer Park West Industrial Park and the Town of Deer Park, just asking if we have any concerns with the Town and Deer Park Planning Board being lead agency designee. Does anybody have any issues? This is something we don't have to pass a motion unless you have an issue with it. And not hearing any, we won't answer them back. I received a letter from Brian Dewey. This is the long-term event coordinator of the Farnham House Haunting. We are writing to you on behalf of the Farnham House Haunting Fundraising. After careful consideration, we decided to remove this fundraiser from the hands of the school and self-insure this event. We would like to have access to the Farnham House once again on the weekend of the 28th, 29th, and 30th of October. Thank you so much for the ability to run this fundraiser at this location. I know the kids in town look forward to it every year, and we look forward to continuing this event. It has come to our attention that there will be a fee associated with the use of the building. If this is approved, just let me know who to make the check out and where we can send the funds along with the insurance. What's your pleasure?
Mayor.
Yes.
It's going to be subject to a contract with the city and also our review that it should. I would assume it's going to be policy increased subsequent benefits and insurance.
I would move that.
So if there's a mo-- if you're moving, it'll be pending the approval of a contract with the city that would be drawn up by the city in the review of valid insurance. Mr. Siegel made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster. Discussion. The fee, because we don't have a fee set up right now, the common fee that we use for Riverside Park--
Riverside Park, the building.
Is how much?
I don't know.
Okay. But I would say we put that fee into effect for each day that they use it. So if they're using it for three days, we charge them for the three days of that time.
Do they need any other services besides that?
He said we didn't need anything. He's going to use electric in the building, but I don't know how we judge that.
I mean, could this be--
I would say so.
To use something for it?
I would say so. And there'll probably be-- because people are there, the type of garbage, garbage cans, but that would be a normal--
Could they clean that up under a roof?
Yeah, I mean, they're pretty good about making sure it's all clean, and they work with Kathy also. Are you satisfied with something like that?
Yeah.
All right. So I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Foster. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Okay. So our contract with the engineering firm for the Whitewater Park, the two gentlemen that ran the firm have since separated but are running what they call sister companies. They both have signed this letter together recommending that the city change their-- move their engineering to Riverwise Engineering, excuse me, yeah, Riverwise Engineering for Recreation Engineering and Planning. They have worked collaboratively since the inception in 2007, and RWE, Riverwise Engineering, is owned by Shane Siegel. REP, which is another company, recreational engineering and planning, is owned by Gary Lacy. In April 2016, the two companies officially split and have commonly referred to our new arrangement as sister companies. Both companies still possess the full capabilities of our collaborative team, but we have both expanded and gained additional resources and skills valuable in the whitewater and water engineering industries. At this time, we feel it is in the city's, Port Jervis' best interest to continue contracting with RWE to ensure a seamless transition and continuation of the existing management and engineering team working on the Delaware River Water, Whitewater and Habitat Improvement Project. We recommend any future contracting be done with RWE. So first, I would need a motion to just agree to contract with Riverwise Engineering.
I hereby make a motion to contract with Riverwise Engineering.
I have a second. A second by Ms. Henry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The second piece I'm going to have to take into executive session because it has to do with a contract with Riverwise Engineering, and we're going to have to discuss part of this contract. So we'll add that. I think that's-- that was added.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Many of us received from Ms. Wasenegger the underpayment of franchise fees and local utility grocery receipts. I should have said something when Deb was here, right? So she knew we were out hunting. I spoke with Ms. Wasenegger today during our meeting, and she recommends that we go, if we're going to do this, that we go with a night comm firm. Basically, it won't cost us anything. The company will look into seeing if we're shortchanged on our grocery, utility grocery receipts, and there's been many benefits, as you can see in the email that you've got. There were several of them. I mean, one, of course, it was in Westchester, got over $139,000 back, but South Blooming Grove in Orange County received $194,000 back. So I think it's well worth our while. If they don't find anything, there's no gain.
Well, we don't get enough right now.
We're not getting anything, so we're not losing anything. So would I have a motion to go with the firm, that night comm?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion with Mr-- for Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor?
Will they get a-- will they get a--
Yeah, they'll get a percentage.
They get a percentage of whatever they collect, right?
But if there's no--
Nothing. Yeah. I did want to move that. That did pass, right?
I didn't have a vote given though.
That's what I asked. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Okay. Appointments. Unfortunately, I don't like to make these appointments after the fact, but when we have members that unfortunately are leaving us, I have to. This appointment that I'm recommending to the council is the only appointment that is appointed by the council. For the IDA, I am recommending Lisa Randazzo as the council liaison. This is the only one that the council has to approve, so I would need a motion and a second.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, a second by Ms. Fitzpatrick. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. And the following appointments I'm making, these are, as well as that one, was replacing Mr. Ritchie in the Community Development Agency. I'm appointing George Belcher as a council member. The Police Department, I am moving member Regis Foster to the chairman position, and I am putting Lisa Randazzo in as a committee member. In Finance, I am moving member Kristen Trove to chairwoman and putting member Lisa Randazzo in that position. We do have one member position open for the Department of Public Works, if anyone is interested in that. Just let me know. As many of you are aware, the council recently voted to match a grant that we received from New York State for master plan and code review and modification. The first step in the process is to form a committee to have a meeting for that grant and to do the work in putting drafts together. The committee will typically consist of two or three members of the council, a member of the planning board, a member of the zoning board of appeals, the building inspector, and two or three residents of the city. I would ask that all council members interested in being on the committee, please email me, email me directly, as well as any member of the public that might be interested in being on the committee, may email me at portjervismayor@gmail.com, or you can go right to our website, and it has a section for comments. I get those emails also directly. You can send it to me through the website if you are interested. I plan on making these appointments by the next council meeting, so please respond within the next two weeks. Thank you. I asked the chief to look at the question that was brought up and concerned on the Hamilton Street parking problems through the time period of about five, a little over five years, five years and six months, since January 1st, 2011, through August 11th, 2016. The area that was searched was from Canal Street to Kingston Avenue. There were 16 PDAAs, which are property damage auto accidents, and one PIAA, which is a personal injury auto accident. No fatalities of accidents. Of the 17 accidents found, only two were specifically in the area of question between Kingston Avenue and Glass Street. One occurred in 2015, of March. Vehicle backed out of a driveway and struck a passing motor vehicle. And the other one was of July of this year, as a vehicle was traveling north on Hamilton Street, sideswiped a parked vehicle in front of 21 Hamilton Street, damaging the mirrors. So I will bring this up for further discussion to the council on your wishes. As a retired police officer of 23 years, one, people aren't allowed to, by law, back out of their driveways. You must, according to the law, New York State law, you're supposed to back into your driveway and nose out of your driveway. The second one, where the vehicle sideswiped, that was, the vehicle tried to stay within the double yellow line, not cross over the double yellow line, and that's why the mirrors were there. I've asked the history of the double yellow line and why it was put there, as that is a regular street, not a street like Kingston Avenue, Jersey, East Main Street, West Main Street, or Fowler, which are also very wide, highly used streets. This street is highly used by people trying to get around, to red lights, and traveling to school. So is there any recommendations by anybody from the council? Hearing none, there doesn't seem to be enough evidence, although the evidence actually points more towards the area of Canal Street where the PDAAs have happened, and there has been some discussion about putting a four-way stop sign there. And I'm going to ask the chief to look into that further, if that is the root of the problem for speeding. Perhaps that could be done, but I'm going to send this back to the chief. Just a reminder that the farmer's market will be having a breakfast on August 8th at 8:00 a.m. and go to no later than 1:00 p.m., when the market normally closes. There will be fruits, vegetables, eggs, and meats from established market vendors used, as well as products from other local eateries. We approved this last meeting, but I just want to remind the public. Also want to remind the public that this, what is it, Sunday, the eight, Sunday, the 18th, September 18th, is Wolfstock. This is the benefit that Deer Park Humane Society, it is a concert. There will be door prizes, limited edition t-shirts that are available, featuring oldies band, band Side Effects, The Ponytails, Jeremy Langdale, Langdale Band, and Slice. Tickets are $15, kids 12 and under are $8. So this will be posted on the website, on, not our website, but on Facebook within the week. Please try to support the Humane Society. Thank you. And as mentioned before, we have the Will of Orange coming up on October 22nd, and on October 29th is the Erie 80. The first one is a run, the second one is a bike race, and you can go online, and you can see this basically spotted everywhere. Every other feed has this information. And I think that is it. I thought I did have that. You know what? I'll move on to city clerk treasures, and then if I find it, I'll bring it back. City Clerk Treasures Report, Ms. Wasenegger.
Yes. Just want to let you know that all it is tax time, it is school tax time, not city or county, so you don't bring those payments to my office. You do bring those to the school complex down where the high school and elementary school is. They do have school tax payment collection office there that is handicap accessible. Also, I will note that I know it's been a topic of discussion in my office regarding the new process with the STARS, that your STAR exemption amount and subsequent tax credit is now going to be refunded to you from the state of New York, so it may look, taste, smell like your school tax bill went up, and yes, New York State is asking you to put those dollars up front and then refund it off the back end. So keep this in mind when you're dealing with your private escrow accounts, et cetera, because the escrow accounts for paying your tax bill are going to be paying a higher tax bill, and then the credit check is going to come back to you. So you can probably expect that your escrow account will go up as a result of the way they switched the STAR tax credit from being on your bill to being a refund check. So just be conscious of that while you're paying your bills and doing your financial planning. Also, city clerk's office was in receipt of a public announcement that was requested by Orange and Rockland to spot real ONR employees. Evidently, there are people going around posing as being from the Orange and Rockland Utility Company in an effort to gain your business, either for solar or other purposes. ONR reminds you to ask for ID. A real ONR employee wears a photo ID badge with his or her name and employee number on it, a fake one doesn't. Confirm your service order number. A real ONR employee will be able to provide you with a number that matches the one given to you when you were scheduled an appointment with us. A fake employee won't be able to. And if in doubt at any time, close that door, call them for verification. A real employee is comfortable when you call our toll-free number, or dedicated number, 845-577-3526, to verify his or her identity before you let anybody in your home. Okay? And I believe that is it right now from the city clerk's office, other than to remind you that tomorrow, September 13th, is a primary election day throughout the state of New York. Polls will be open at 6:00 a.m., which means myself and the election inspectors will be out there on your streets and opening your polling places at 5:00 a.m. So be nice to those election inspectors when you come visit them. They have a very long day to work because they work from basically 5:00 a.m. till after polls close at about 9:30. So it's a long day. Be nice to your election inspectors.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So Mr. Fagion is watching us live. He did send me on the correspondence of the bike race by West Point. He says that they will need to close Skyline Drive from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Mr. Siegel, all right. So there's still daylight after that for people to be able to use the park, but he didn't mention whether we need to close the whole park or not. And also, the fee for the Farnham, Farnham House should be $100 a day. Do we need to make a motion for that, or we can just send that as $100? Thank you. Okay. And I do have this resolution of the Common Council, the City of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, regarding the city's application for a grant under the Restore New York Communities Initiative. This is on the dilapidated buildings. Whereas the mayor and the Common Council, the City of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, are applying for a grant which will allow the city to demolish dilapidated, blighted, and potentially dangerous structures within the city in ordens to enhance the city's local revitalization and/or urban development plan. Whereas the official title of the proposed grant is the Empire State Development Corporation, ESDC, Restore New York Communities Initiative Round Four. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Common Council, the City of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, that the proposed project to demolish the aforementioned structures is consistent with the city's local revitalization and/or urban development plan, that the proposed financing is appropriate for this, appropriate for this specific project, that the project facilities effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources so as to promote both economic development and preservation of community resources, and where applicable, the project develops and enhances infrastructure and/or other facilities in a manner that will attract, create, and sustain employment opportunities by the city. The city confirms acknowledgement and responsibility for the 10% project match in cash or in kind. We discussed this before, but it had to be in the form of a resolution, and we did pass it, but I need a second. A second. Or a motion, I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Foster, a second. Second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. In old business, Ms. Randazzo.
Honored. Also, along with this Restore New York, it is required that we do a public hearing, so we would like to request the council to set a public hearing for the next council meeting, which is September 26th, at 7:00 p.m., for discussion on the Restore New York grant.
So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Now, Ms. Randazzo.
Nothing, I don't think.
Nothing? Sorry. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
No, old business.
Mr. Belcher?
No, old business.
Ms. Henry?
Uh, no, nothing.
Mr. Foster? First Ward Council meeting will be this Thursday, 6:00 p.m. at the Firehouse Hose Vibes. This Thursday? Yes. Thank you. Can I hear him? No, that's it. Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also remind people about Wolfstock. It's a memorial benefit concert, as the mayor said. It's this Sunday, September 18th, from 1:00 until 5:00 at Port Jervis High School. They're oldie bands, there's others out there reliving their youth like me, and you want to listen to the best music ever, that would be the place to go. And as a bonus, the Humane Society, who is in need of funding, gets the proceeds. So it'd be a great way to spend the four hours Sunday at one of the-- And also, I'd like to applaud the hospital for their medical village plans. Can only be good for Port Jervis. I heard nothing about maternity, and people have been asking that, but I do suggest that if you are a patient there, that you order the raspberry turkey wrap. It was excellent. It was excellent. I don't want to be a patient to get it, but it was good.
Did you take any chocolate chip cookies that were missing when I got in there, Stan?
I only had--
Stan.
I have a special diet. I can't--
Oh, that's right. You're on live on TV, and she's watching. Okay, I got it.
Well, maybe I had half of a cookie.
That's what I thought.
And again, Mrs. Wasenegger said about the primary vote. I don't vote in primaries, but many do. This is a great opportunity to go and do your thing tomorrow. And, oh, that's new business, old business. I think we really need to take a look at Mr. Groth's situation up there. I'm not sure that both sides are telling legitimate stories, and I don't think any of us have to come here meeting after meeting and use their eight minutes to try to resolve a problem, so I think we really need to take a good hard look at that. And that's all I have under old business.
Thank you. New business, sir?
New business. I want to welcome little Henry Holly. We often had an opportunity to watch his mother. We often had an opportunity, and probably will have again, to listen to his sister, but we don't often have an opportunity to see Henry. So Henry, thanks for coming to the meeting.
You're welcome. I was bad, man.
And he behaved himself.
I was.
Great.
I'm bad.
And I want to give best wishes to Mrs. Trove's grandfather. Wonderful man that's sick. I want to wish him the best. And one other thing is, a lot of people complain about lights being out, and the fire department has to go around, and when they go to fires on utility poles, they have to give the upper numbers and the lower numbers. So many poles have no numbers, many poles have missing numbers. I think we need to write a letter to ONR asking them to review their poles and put proper numbers on it, because one, I just looked at today, the only numbers on the two lines is 1, 2, 3.
Where's it at? Where is it located?
All right, one second.
Well, just so I can reference them--
It doesn't matter because they're all over. The one in front of 61, 61 Church Street has no numbers.
Okay. That's all. As long as I can reference one.
But there's lots of--
All right.
And it would make it easier for everybody, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster? Yes. I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session after public comment regarding the following matters. One, a personal matter related to the employee retirement sentence. Two, a potential contract agreement for the sale of the city-owned property on Farm Street, and invite the Director of Public Works and Building Official in. Also, a pending litigation matter regarding 2432 Front Street, and also with engineering firm for the Whitewater Park contracting. I'd like to invite Valerie Majinsky in. Upon the conclusion of executive session, the council will also be meeting with our legal counsel for advice regarding matters involving attorney and client privilege. Make a motion.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Foster. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Belcher. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
I'd also like to give my condolences to Kristen Trove with her grandfather and her family, and also to Kathy Little. As John Little passed away this afternoon, I, my condolences to the Little family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Henry?
Yes, I'd also like to express my condolences to Kristen and her family. And also, I would like to bring up, there was a constituent concern in the first ward regarding available immunizations for some of our residents who may not be fully insured or insured at all. I know several people were involved in the conversation, and we looked into it through the county health department to see what was available. And then I did reach out to the Middletown Center, our community health center, and they were kind enough to invite me down for a conversation on Friday and a tour of their facility. During that conversation, I spoke with a lovely woman named Shelley Polly, who's the site director. She assured me they participate in a immunization program, which they receive the immunization itself, the medicine itself, for free. There's a small administration fee for that. However, that fee is on a sliding scale, and she assured me that nobody would be refused treatment if they need it, that that sliding scale could be adjusted based on income. They, of course, would want to. There are people in that facility whose main purpose is to sign you up either with Medicaid or in the insurance marketplace, so they definitely want to get as many people insured as possible. However, there's a waiting time, there is a lag period a lot of times, and there is the assumption that somebody would have to wait too long or too long for them, and then they get lost, and then they have to do the process all over again, but she assured me that that would not be the case. So if you do know somebody who needs an immunizations, if you know somebody who is not reaching out to this facility, please direct them to Hammond Street. They have not only pediatric care, which is, I believe, led by a local pediatrician who's a local person. Most of the staff there is local or from this area originally. They have dental care, they have mental health facilities, they have, I believe, internal medicine. They also have the WIC office there, which is available to our residents, and a lot of people are not aware that it's a very high percentage of the median income that you can qualify for WIC, which is a huge help for our families to get them eating better and to have healthy lifestyles. So I would encourage you, if you are in need-- So I would encourage you, if you are in need of anything, go down, see what they can offer you. There is more available than you think in the community. And then if there is a problem or there is an issue, please bring it up to somebody, either to your councilperson or to your county legislator or somebody, and somebody will reach out and try to help you. Nobody should.